Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the October meeting of the Executive Board and welcome everybody who's in attendance in the Civic Hall and also watching online. I'm going to go to the top of the agenda at this point and start with, are there any appeals against refusal of inspection of documents?
Thanks Chair, to confirm, there have been no appeals received for today's meeting.
Thank you. Are there any exempt information and exclusion of the press and the public, please?
Thanks Chair. Should the board be agreeable, Appendix 2 to Item 9, which is Housing Estate Redevelopment at Sugar Hill Close and Wordsworth Drive at Ullton, is proposed to be designated as being exempt from publication and considered in private at the conclusion of the public part of the meeting.
Thank you. Item 3, are there any late items, please?
To confirm Chair, no late items of business today.
Okay. Item 4, to ask Executive Board if there are any declarations of interest. I take it there are not. Item 5 is the minutes of the meeting held on the 22nd of September. We all agree, happy to agree those minutes. Take it we are, that's great, thanks. And on to the first substantive item, councillor Venna, please, item 6.
Thank you Chair, this is the latest update on Thriving Child Poverty Strategy, it's a report we bring every six months. It's slightly out of sync, so the last report I only brought in June, but that was delayed from April. But we're back in the cycle with Exec Board and scrutiny, so the next report will be in April next year. So the report outlines that pre-pandemic, there were just under 35,000 children in Leeds living in poverty, which was 23% compared to 18% nationally, though as I said before, when I presented this, the previous Children's Commissioner estimated that additional 300,000 children will be placed in poverty as a direct result of the pandemic. The report outlines the fairly catastrophic situation we're in now in the autumn, with the £20 uplift on Universal Credit ending at the same time as Sferlo and Covid self-isolation grants and the increase in fuel payments and also, of course, people being aware they've got an additional NI levy from April. We do, of course, now have the new support grant, but it's widely seen by people working in the area of poverty and child poverty as vastly inadequate. The Joseph Rowntree Foundation calculated that if it was divided between every family who had the £20 removed, they would get precisely £1.75 each. The report refers to the causes of poverty, it refers to housing costs, it refers to the inadequacy of the benefit system and as usual, it goes through each work stream and provides quantitative and qualitative data. We have added a new work stream since Covid, and as a direct result of Covid, which is about access to green space, because it was very, very much highlighted during the pandemic and during lockdowns that children had inequitable access to green space and that some of the children living in the areas of highest deprivation have the least access to green space, such as no gardens and not being near a park. We've also amended the housing work stream so that it's more explicitly focused on better links between between children's social care and housing, so working directly with families living, living in social housing and we've got a specific work stream around care levers, which I've had direct experience with through case work. It's working incredibly well, having better links between social care and housing. As I say every time I present this report, we do not, as a local authority, control the levers to lift people out of poverty, which is a great frustration. Most of those rest with central government. However, we do have a moral responsibility to mitigate the impact of child poverty and this report is our latest summary of how we're doing that. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Venna. For any comments, councillor Carter, please.
Yeah, a couple of points. There are two case, two case to the examples of outcomes, both, both are positive in terms of housing, you've touched on housing just now. But to link this with the £7 million that we've been given to help people with Covid pressures over the next few months. The same, I'd like some reassurance that we're addressing the problems on a citywide basis. And I've had this discussion with councillor Lewis already, but I'll repeat just a bit of it. I don't think a judgment based on geographical areas hits the problem on the head. There are examples, I think, throughout Leeds of in some areas greater than others, absolutely. But that indicates that this funding support should be available on a citywide basis. And I hope that that, I can have some reassurance here today, that's, that's going to be the case. Also, the case studies that you highlighted, which was actually success stories in terms of housing. It makes you think that there is, that is an issue here that may be much more widespread. And I'd like to know what we're doing to ensure that we don't, however positive two case studies are that have been resolved, it leaves the question in your head, what about the ones that we haven't touched? Where the issue is very much with us and not with Universal Credit? Because the people simply weren't, weren't getting it, who would have got it? That's the whole point. So I'd like some reassurance on that, please.
Thank you Fiona. So thank you councillor Carter, Fiona would like to come in, please.
Yeah, I don't know if someone else wants to respond on how the grant's going to be used across the city, but I can respond on the housing issues. I mean, we do have some really specific projects within housing that are directly about addressing poverty. One is obviously selective licensing, which is about bringing up the quality of housing in areas of greatest deprivation, which feels really important because the balance of housing stocks changed so dramatically in the city that where social housing was our largest amount of housing, it's now private rented. And we will all know from our own wards, the number of families that are living in poor quality rented accommodation. So selective licensing is a really important project to address that. And we still have the income maximisation project within the housing work stream, which is about making sure that people are receiving the maximum amount of benefits they're entitled to. And various situations of this report have identified how many thousands of pounds families have gained, which weren't previously accessing that money. So we still have those projects on an ongoing basis, but someone might have better detail than me on how the Covid, the latest situation of the grant's going to be used.
Thank you Fiona, I'll ask Neil Evans to comment on the Winter Precious Fund.
So the fund at this time has come with sort of quite, quite tight criteria around it. So we're working through those at the moment. A fairly substantial proportion is aimed at actually providing for free school meals during holiday periods and obviously that will apply across, right across the city. I think we should be in a position by the end of next week to have pulled it all together about where it will apply and we'll obviously be sharing that with everyone.
Thank you Neil. Councillor Gold, would you like to come in, please?
Yes, thanks Chair. I did have a nice, long briefing with Children's Services on this. I won't spend too much time on this. The, we're very good at measuring things in this city and our statistical publishing is significant and impressive. It's a matter of what we choose to do with the data, once it's at our disposal. And there are lots of initiatives listed in this document and it's been repeated in previous documents in terms of some of the interventions that we are making. What concerns me is actually allied to a point that councillor then raised, which was that the Universal Credit reduction is going to mean that there's a much wider impact citywide on many more families, some of which are going to experience what poverty means for the first time in, in, in much of their lifetime. And it, and it also refers to what councillor Venna mentioned about this council doesn't control the levers to lift people out of poverty. But I'm not sure I completely agree with that, because there are some families in this city which have had consistent support from Leeds City Council over several generations. And one of the things that hopefully we can hope to demonstrate as a locally accountable, politically accountable organisation, is that we can show impact from the consistency of the services that we offer up. And I think one of the things that's missing from these documents as they come forward is a level of evaluation to enable us to celebrate the schemes which work so that they can then hopefully be universalised across the city. And as councillor Carter mentioned, not just simply focused on very specific geographies, which, some of which have achieved that kind of focus year after year after year, without us actually being able to demonstrate that we've had an effective impact on the problem. So it's just one of those things that I would like to see in future papers is to show that evaluation. And then secondly, I really do think there's a, an under appreciation in this paper of the value of children's centres. They've, they've reverted into the background in terms of children's services focus over recent years, as we've looked at the challenges around children's care. Now that some of those challenges are being addressed through infrastructural investment, like new children's homes, there is the opportunity perhaps to refocus on children's centres and enable them to reach those families which aren't reached by that very easy relationship that we can have with our own council housing offices. And we might reach much more of those families more effectively and consistently through children's centres that are in private rented accommodation, that are feeling the pinch even more, because they don't have that level of support from council housing staff. So that's something I'd like to see in future reports. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Golden. Who wants to go first? I can see Julie and councillor Venna. Councillor Venna, would you like to go first, please?
Yeah, thank you for your positive feedback on our data, because it's usually an area you're, you're critical on. So I'm glad you approve of the data in this report. You're absolutely right that the impact of the £20 uplift being removed is potentially catastrophic and, and yes, absolutely will push more families into poverty. Joseph Rowntree Foundation estimated an additional 200,000 families nationally. So that means a significant number of families in Leeds will be pushed into poverty as a direct result of that. And that's why there's an additional appendix with this paper that's not been in previous iterations, which refers to the specific support that the councils got in place that will be really important over this period. I mean, it's a reality that child poverty has increased over the last 10 years in terms of your comment about we don't control the levers to lift children out of poverty. Last year, the Children's Commissioner made a really unprecedented political intervention as a non-political role when Boris Johnson tried to, tried to state in Prime Minister's Questions that child poverty had reduced. And she actually came in and said, that's absolutely inaccurate, it's, it's increased. That is a reality that we need really significant changes at a national level to reduce child poverty, as happened under the last Labour administration. There is evidence in the report of schemes which have been successful as part of the thriving work and which are being replicated, like the school uniform reuse schemes, for example, which are now largely across the city and have a really positive impact, both in terms of the climate emergency as well as, as well as saving families a significant amount of money. I thought it was a really interesting suggestion about children's centres and I'd be really happy to include the work in the future report. They're not profiled in this report, but they're absolutely not in any way marginalised. They're still a really significant part of our offer as a directorate. And now that we're allowed out and about again, and I get to actually hang out with children again, I have been visiting children's centres across the city. I've been to a lot now and I've been to outer wards as well as inner city children's centres. And it's absolutely the case that they are all, including in the outer areas, working, really doing really significant work with poverty. I mean, it's really harrowing some of the stories that I've heard, particularly, I went to, I went to one in City and Riverside Ward and the stories they were telling me about the conditions in private rented housing that some families are living in and the, just the level of deprivation is, is horrifying. And they're doing the most amazing advocacy work and the most fantastic campaigning work and supporting families to access what they need to survive. So I'd be really happy to include the work in the future, but I think it's a really good suggestion.
Thank you councillor Venna. I was going to bring Julie in, is it, Julie would like to come in, please?
Yeah, so, good afternoon, Julie Longworth, Deputy Director with Children and Families. And I suppose I just wanted to reiterate councillor Venna's point in relation to children's centres, because they have been and remain at the heart of our Children and Young People's Plan, our strategy across the city. They were really at the forefront of our Covid response. So that local level, you know, children's centre staff, little else daycare that stayed open throughout, really, they know their families, they know their children. And, you know, that remains the case. And I think we have also just entered into a, a new initiative, a new relationship with Nesta and that is really reimagining our early years. So again, it's continuing to have that focus on continuous improvement within our children's centres and across our early years services. And within that, a real focus on the Andrew Ledson review, the outcome of that in relation to the development of family and community hubs. So again, there's an awful lot of innovative work taking place within our children's centres and we'd be very happy to share more information on that going forward. I think for me, in terms of impact, I think it's quite powerful within the report in terms of some of the direct feedback that we have had from children and families themselves. And I suppose in relation to, as an example, the healthy holiday scheme. You know, when we're hearing, when we're reading about, you know, a child who has had a new book and they can't actually remember the last time that they had a new book. And when we're hearing about children who have received activity packs, who describe it feeling like Christmas. And, you know, when we hear about a single mom who is on a debt management plan, who has fled domestic violence and, and who reports that, you know, ordinarily, she struggles to feed herself at the end of the month, but with the food boxes that were provided and through this scheme, the fact that actually that was not the case for her. And so I absolutely accept the point about evaluation, but I think it's really encouraging when we hear positive direct feedback from children and families themselves.
Thank you. Councillor Carter would like to come in.
Yes, just two quick points. I accept largely what's been said, but I have to say it's a bit rich really. We've just had the, the inspection report, which has highlighted a number of serious omissions, let's say not failings, let's call them omissions, that you're now going to rectify. But I can give you, I'm not going to do that. I am prepared to give you in writing two cases that are really harrowing, where children's services have failed the mothers completely. So, you know, it, it's not just a wonderfully rosy picture. And if you'd had a better inspection report, I maybe wouldn't have made those comments, but you haven't. So I have. Because elected members should all know of cases in their own wards that they've taken up. Why, I'm sorry to say, children's services have not been as, as, as effective as they should have been. And, and all you want to refer to the successes. But the point I wanted to make until you made those comments was on page 27. And I agree with part of it, but I think as a bland statement, it, it it almost provokes some comment in terms of what exactly it is we're talking about. And you say poverty can't just be measured in terms of household income. You're right, it can't. But in Leeds, we take a wider consideration alongside the statistics. Poverty is about what you possess in comparison to what society possesses around you. To make a statement like that, there needs to be a lot more in-depth comment. Otherwise, I could say to you, and I will say to you, does it mean that the kid who has a mobile phone, which doesn't happen to be the latest and top of the range, and four of his neighbours who live in the same sort of houses and the same sort of income and go to the same school house, that we should be actually intervening to, to use a phrase, level that up? And whilst I agree with what you're saying, to put it in a sentence like, a paragraph like that, well, it actually asks for the comparison I've just given you. And I'd like to see a lot more, a lot more around that paragraph as to precisely what it is you mean, in which case you might get me to entirely agree with you. But a statement like that on its own begs the question, doesn't it?
Thank you. Councillor Venna, please.
I mean, I mean, we could expand on it. It's because it is absolutely the case that poverty is relative in that people are experiencing having a lot less people around them. And it's interesting that you used the example of a mobile phone, because actually, the pandemic has hugely demonstrated differences in children's experience around what technology they've had access to. That's been a massive thing. And it's meant that children are in such different places now and inequalities have been magnified by who had access to what tech in their home during lockdowns, for example. So there's plenty more we could say if you wanted us to expand that paragraph. And regarding the inspection, I just would remind people that the precise wording in the report said there were no areas of serious weakness. I said in full council and in scrutiny and in the press that we completely accept the recommendations of the report and we have a really comprehensive action plan to get back to where we would want to be when we have our full inspection. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Venna. If there's no further comments on this paper, I'll turn to the recommendations on page 22. And I take it everybody is happy with those recommendations. So we'll move on to item 7, please councillor Harland.
Thank you Chair. It seems that this follows the item referring to child poverty, as many of those affected from our new and emerging communities. This is the fifth annual report on migration to the Exec Board and my first as the executive lead for this important agenda for the city. As a former member, I know that councillor Anderson in his scrutiny board keep a watching brief on this, but unfortunately it slipped from the work programme this year. However, as Exec Board member, I am keen that this should be on any future work programme, should the relative chair next year agree. As you are all aware, we are seeing how quickly the migration agenda is changing at a global level and impacting on the UK nationally, regionally and locally. At a local level, we continue to work with the government and respond to guidance. As a compassionate city, Leeds continues to be open and welcoming and strives to protect and provide support to those people who are most vulnerable through partnership working with public and third sector organisations. The council is in the process of applying for a Council of Sanctuary Award to become a member of the City of Sanctuary Local Authority Network. This is a long-term commitment and will be renewed every three years. This report highlights a whole city approach and includes a range of activities delivered and supported by both the council's migration team and services across the city over the past 12 months. City partnerships have contributed to ensuring the engagement and support to the most vulnerable migrant households, which ultimately, ultimately benefits all Leeds residents. It's quite a long report, but it shows the depths and the complexity of this work. Some of the key headlines include changes to immigration policy, including Hong Kong, British National Overseas, Afghans and the new immigration plan that will impact on asylum seekers. This details the various government schemes and highlights the complexities of immigration status. Our connections with the Home Office and other government departments helped to build relationships over the past year and we've continued to challenge national decisions and impact that this has at a local level. Executive Board is asked to recommend that the Director of Communities, Housing and Environment writes to the Home Office, requesting improved communication and structures between government and the local authority to ensure that the effectiveness of the support provided is maximised and that the experience and expertise here in Leeds is fully utilised. Excuse me. We are often told of changes at very short notice, which isn't helpful to the team or indeed to those coming to our city. Some examples in the report show of the ways how the city has responded and include supporting partnerships between statutory and third sector organisations, which has been key to the responding as a compassionate city to opportunities and challenges. The intensive support and promotion of the EU Settlement Scheme saw Leeds with the highest number of applications in the region and partnership work continues in the city to support late applications and those still waiting for an outcome. There is only a small team within the council supporting the migration agenda and I'd like to take this opportunity to recognise and thank on all our behalf those who have been working in this area, which isn't always easy nor straightforward. The report and the appendix provide further details and I'm proud that we have the expertise to respond and this is demonstrated as the report, excuse me, in the report through partnership working and developing projects that would support both the service user and our services. I'd also like to add that there will be an introduction to migration training on the 7th of December aimed at elected members. I'd highly recommend it, I've done it myself. And when the details come through, I hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Harland. Councillor Carter, please.
Yes, you made the point about communication and short notice things. I think you have to accept, let's take the Afghani situation. That was completely beyond the government's control. President Biden, for good or worse, pulled the rug out in Afghanistan, precipitated a humanitarian crisis with people flooding to get out of the country and gave the UK, France and Germany no notice whatever. So, you know, I think you need to temper the lack of information with the fact that sometimes our partners take precipitate action. That we could have had a much more ordered, ordered migration of people we needed to protect from Afghanistan and that's entirely the fault of the Americans. I would like to say however, I want to congratulate as you have done our team, because I think the work we've done with the short notice on Afghanistan has been extremely good. And I have a question on that, which is as regards Afghani migrants, the families, have the, all the children who have come to Leeds of school age been found places in schools? And if so, you don't have to say whereabouts, but if so, I'd like to know whether they have or they haven't. And I think that's really the, the final point I want to make, apart from one, which is what we haven't got is any statistics about outward migration, not real statistics, not. And I would like to see as part of the piece of work you take forward, I'll give you a fair warning, you're going to get asked this anyway when you go to scrutiny. What, what is the other side of the same coin? Because it would be very interesting to know what outward migration has been, who, what demographic it has and from what countries.
Thank you councillor Carter. Thank you councillor Carter. We will, I'm sure that information can be found and on the specific question of schools, is that Leila, is that something you can answer, please?
Hello Chair, Leila Young, Head of Community Relations and Cohesion at the council. We are currently working with children's services and the schools admissions team to get all of the children's school places in local schools, that's local primary schools and local high schools. That's currently taking place at the moment.
Thank you. Councillor Golden, please.
Thanks Chair. A couple of things really, and it's mostly to do with housing. And now, I believe, when I had my briefing, that you might have been misquoted in a local government information unit. What would you call it? Publication, basically saying that the council had homes lined up, but the government hadn't actually provided you with any Afghan refugees to put in them. And so I just wondered if you could clarify that. And then, more importantly as well, to look at how we identify what is appropriate housing. So for instance, the, the government had a backlog recently and they were housing asylum seekers in hotels, which isn't the greatest suitable accommodation for them. And they're supposed to be looking at providing more permanent accommodation, which is more appropriate within communities. And we're meant to be accessing accommodation for Afghan refugee families to be housed within the community. And then we're also going to get a paper later on today, which talks about the difficulty when people are displaced within the city in terms of alternative accommodation. I'm referring to the Sugar Hill paper. the Sugar Hill paper. And also, the council itself, in terms of its housing growth strategy, has relied very much of late on windfall development, which is in the city centre, and doesn't provide a great degree of affordable accommodation. So I'm just wondering how this strategy is being taken forward in terms of identifying suitable housing, which is readily available when we need it.
Well, I can certainly really respond about the being misquoted, because I didn't even know I'd been in it. So, welcome to politics. On your other point, Leila will take that up.
Leila, please.
Just following on from councillor Carter's comments, because of the rapid evacuation out of Afghanistan, there has been a huge volume of Afghan citizens who've arrived in the UK. And councillor Galton is right, the Home Office have been using a series of bridging accommodation across the country, some of which includes hotels. And so there's a bit of a backlog at the moment in terms of matching people in hotels to accommodation that is available across the country. Leeds, as a city and as a council, have made a pledge that we will accept so many, a defined amount of people through the programme. And unfortunately, while that backlog is in place, there will be a delay in people accessing permanent accommodation. In terms of accommodation available, we do work closely with our housing colleagues, and the majority of housing that will be made available will either be in the private rented sector or working closely with the registered social landlord sector as well. So that match, we're having those conversations with Migration Yorkshire, who are our strategic migration partnership, and with the Home Office about when that matching pledges to accommodation will start in earnest, really. I think that answers the question.
Thank you. Great. If there's no more comments on this paper, I will turn to the recommendations on page 75. And obviously, note the comments that have been made about this report going to the relevant scrutiny board. And I see everybody is happy with those recommendations. So we'll turn to item eight, please councillor Hayden.
Thank you Chair. So my first paper is the Connecting Leeds Transport Strategy and Action Plan. And this is, I'm really, I'm really pleased to be able to present this to executive board. And it sets out our vision for Leeds to be a city where you don't need a car. And I was born in the middle of the 1970s, when we were famous for being the motorway city of the north. So, yeah, it's been quite a turnaround for the city, in my lifetime, anyway. So we want Leeds to be somewhere where everyone has an affordable, low carbon, healthy and accessible choice in how they travel. And this report presents the Connecting Leeds Transport Strategy for adoption, following an extensive consultation and engagement exercise undertaken starting in January 2021. So I came to this in February 2021. So I'd like to thank councillor Mulhern for having the vision to start this and take this forward. And it's been really impressive, the consultation, especially if you remember back in January, February, when we were in complete lockdown. And the webinars have been really well attended, and watched then later on YouTube, et cetera. And officers adapted incredibly quickly to doing a large city scale consultation, completely online, really, with some paper copies given out for those who couldn't access online. The strategy also sets out the overarching challenges and opportunities facing Leeds and our strategic policy and infrastructure measures to achieve our vision. And we've got an action plan until 2024, and it's been developed with specific actions, policy and infrastructure that we are going to develop to ensure work towards the overarching objectives of tackling climate change, delivering inclusive growth, and the health and wellbeing strategy are met. And you will all be seeing some of those infrastructures already taking place, particularly Love Cookridge Street. And I'm walking down there to get the bus. And I'd like to thank the people of Leeds for their patience with the ongoing roadworks, which will see the corn exchange take its pride of place in the beautiful public realm that the grade one status of that beautiful building deserves, and the redevelopment at City Square that will come forward. And I know it's really, really annoying when your bus has to go up to the head row and then down, and when the water bursts. And so what we're doing when there's roadworks going on. So I really want to thank the people of Leeds. And a huge thank you to the highways and Connecting Leeds team for all the work. I've been hugely impressed since coming into this portfolio by the passion, the vision, the dedication, and the sheer amount of hard work that goes in from everybody in the team. So I just want to say a huge thank you to all of them as well. Thank you. I'll leave it there.
Thanks councillor Hayden. Any comments? councillor Carter, please.
Yeah, well, let's start with the consultation, shall we, which apparently has been a huge success. 1,739 respondents out of an adult population of, what, 700,000? And surprise, surprise, 68% agree with the consultation, which makes up 0.25 of the Leeds population. Now, I have to tell you, that is not my view of success for a consultation. My view is that people haven't taken any notice of some of the implications in this report, and when they do, will be bouncing off the ceiling. For example, low carbon charge, which is explicitly referenced with the quote, "we may need to consider", that's code for road pricing. It's not within the proposals in these reports, but it is mentioned. Also, given, I just think you should have waited perhaps a little longer before this came before us. Because over and over again, not least in the leaders' foreword, is HS2 mentioned. Now, we all know that we're going to get, well, that's exactly, there are those people who don't want HS2, like the gentleman's to get aside of me. And there are all sorts of implications around that announcement, which may or may not be greeted with pleasure by some people. But it just seems to me then, with our, we're setting up a strategy, which you know is not going to be achieved in the time scale you have set. No doubt, you've decided who you're going to blame for that already, one guess. And I have no problem with the vision of where we want to get to. Don't have a problem with that. But I have a problem with the fact we have the national government, the regional mayor, and the city council having three different targets for achieving all sorts. So we're guaranteed to have one hell of a model. And I just, take the airport, we've made no decision on our planning committee. Manchester's airport is, what's it going to grow by? On its present plans, from 26 million to 51 million, and we haven't even made a decision on getting the terminal sorted out. I just, I just think that wonderful aspirations. But when you finish up with three different plans for when we achieve what, something somewhere is doomed to have to give. And I just think we are, a 2024 target is fine for certain things, you may achieve it. But you're not going to achieve all that's in this plan. In the time, let me say before anyone says, oh, you're the best of them. In the time scale you have set, you are not, because the national government's target is 2050. And the people who hold most of the purse strings now on highway interventions have an eight year, 2038, eight years after our target. So, yeah, it's time for some straight talking, and let's get some realism into this. And as regards, and you brought it up, not me, and I wasn't going to, the current holdups, I mean, there has to be, and I feel sorry for highways engineers at the moment, I do really, because there's so much going on, and all sorts of reasons why. But my God, it is one heck of a mess. And it isn't just in the city centre, that you alluded to over and over again. It's in most of the outer areas as well. And they're just, if we're going to press ahead in any shape or form with this, the coordination has got to rally to improve, or you're going to have one heck of a lot of upset people over and above what you've got now, which is already going through the roof.
Thank you councillor Carter. I think it's worth reflecting, the airport decision isn't with us, it's with the Secretary of State waiting for a decision. So I don't think we can be responsible for the Secretary of State. And as far as I'm concerned, you know, the government is 100% behind HS2. They've released a very detailed route planning for our area. Been lots of speculation, as far as I'm aware at this point in time, they intend to deliver the route that was set out by the Conservative Lib Dem coalition government in 2013, until I hear otherwise. And it'd be hugely disappointing if we do lose out on a lot of investment, if the same governing party makes a different decision to the one that they did when they launched HS2. You know, that's going ahead, and I think it's right, it's at the, it is in our strategy until any point a decision is made. So I think I just wanted to make those two points. I don't know, as you referred, I'm to my, I don't know councillor Hayden, if you want to add anything.
Yes, please. First of all, I'm not going to apologise for being ambitious. That's what we do in Leeds. That's what we've always done in Leeds. We're going to be ambitious. That's why we've got a target of 2030, when other places, including the government, have got 2050. And I dread to think what the globe will be like if we all had a target of 2050 in mind. So I'm not going to apologise for you being ambitious for Leeds and for the people of Leeds. And in tackling the climate emergency particularly, we haven't got any longer to wait to bring this report. We need to do it now. There are many reasons. And one of the reasons that there's so much going on, as you'll be quite aware councillor Carter, is that we're given very, very short timeframes to spend that money in the city centre and in other places. And so we have to crack on. And I just want to thank, it's not a mess. I want to thank, I want to thank each and every one of the team that involved in and who do take abuse from people, when they're doing their job and they're working hard, and they're doing it under quite very challenging circumstances, which included a global pandemic, I'll just remind you of. So in terms of road user charging, obviously, it's something that the government might introduce, that has to be discussed. There's no plan says yet. It's not a part of our strategy. And we, as we just await, and as far as we know on HS2, that is happening. And the government has spent a long time planning that. And we'll, we'll see whether, when it gets delivered. I mean, councillor Lewis has talked about the airport and the fact that that is with the Secretary of State. We need a transport strategy for Leeds. We would be in dereliction of our duty if we did not have a transport strategy for Leeds. We're working very, very closely with West Yorkshire partners and with other West Yorkshire local authorities, and particularly with the mayor. And yes, they do have different targets when they come to climate change. But in West Yorkshire, there is a very strong feeling around the fact that we need to improve our transport and make transport accessible to people, affordable, and give them a low, that they have a low carbon option. It was a hugely successful consultation. I mean, somebody would be able to come in with the actual figures. But 1,700 is actually very, very good for, for a transport strategy. It's not something that, you know, I know the population of Leeds, I think it's higher than 700,000. Adult, right. We only have 100,000 children then. Right, okay. So. So, and we did, and children were consulted as well. So, and it's, but the fact is, compared to past consultations, it was, it was very successful. And given the challenges around that consultation, where we couldn't get out to community committees in the same way, we couldn't get out and meet the public. And Connecting Leeds have started that back in the summer, having dropping sessions, et cetera, where it was safe to do so. And, and they very much wanted to get out and meet the public as well. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Hayden. Yes, please councillor Carter. Then we'll move on to councillor Galton.
I think you just about won the councillor Rafika award for talking nonsense. Let's go back to the beginning. Which government announced HS2?
It is a pub quiz now.
Well, if it was a pub quiz, I suppose you'd found a friend.
Well, the route was, well, the, the route was announced in about January 2013 by the Conservative and Lib Dem coalition.
It was announced long before that. And it's a meeting with the then Transport Minister Lord Adonis. I, along with other council leaders, were summoned to be told, known certain terms, that we're going to announce HS2. And it was going to go from Birmingham and then to Manchester, and Leeds would just get a loop across the Pennines. And afterwards, the council leader sat round and when he cleared off to wherever he goes to, I, the council leaders sat round talking about it. And one Labour leader, by what name, turned to me and said, you've got no chance. It's already decided it's going to Manchester, end of story. Then, you're quite right, the coalition government announced the Y route. So if you're going to talk about the history of things, get your facts right first. Secondly, I have not criticised the ambition of the city at all. But I've just said, you should put it in perspective. And when you read this, and then you look at everything else that's going on, you realise that, to be very unkind, you say, you also, you want to write a paper that is doomed not to be achieved. Now, I'm sure the officers have worked very hard on this, and don't think that at all. But that's what's going to happen. And then you're going to say, you've got one of you, basically, everyone but yourselves. I'm sorry, there comes a time when you have to stand up and say, yeah, well, this is what we're going to do, and if we can't, it's our fault. But you never do.
Thank you for confirming I was right on the date that the Y route was launched, councillor Carter. The right government, 2013 was a Conservative and Lib Dem government, for those that are a little confused about it, has been running the country for the last 11 years. councillor Galton, please.
Oh, well, considering, I usually get a load of rolled eyes whenever I mention HS2 at executive board. I want to put a stop to this particular discussion, because I think the autopsy that we're having on this, on this over bloated scheme, is something which is a little bit precipitative. And let's wait to see what the final decision looks like. I'd rather concentrate on what we can control locally. And I disagree with councillor Carter, and I agree with councillor Hayden, in that what is the point in having local accountability and devolved structures if you can't demonstrate that you have your own ambitions? And no one can argue that this document isn't ambitious. My problem with it is about its deliverability. And I don't think it's because, you know, you haven't got the money, and you're expecting somebody else to give you the money, and you're going to pass the blame if you don't get it. I'm more bothered about, actually, how the entire city gets involved in this. Because it's all right having a transport plan, but there's no point if it's just a transport plan for transport planners and their mates to discuss. And all of the examples that were given by councillor Hayden earlier were primarily around public transport, public realm improvements in Leeds city centre. And that was a result of an economic model which identified Leeds city centre as the primary economic driver for the region, never mind for our own city. However, we've had, as has been pointed out, a COVID epidemic since then. I'm not sure this report actually reflects the different way of working that people have these days, the greater realisation that homeworking and spending most of your nine to five day within the environment within the environment within which you live, as opposed to somewhere that you commute to, is just as important these days. The report refers to 15-minute neighbourhoods. But are we really in a position to actually do any work on understanding what a 15-minute neighbourhood looks for all the different communities that are in our city? We don't. And one of the problems we have at the moment is that our highway section have the capacity and the resources to deliver a very high level strategic document like this. But one thing that they don't have is the ability to respond to the needs of the vast majority of the communities of this city and their own transport ambitions for their own neighbourhoods. I would really like to have seen in this document a commitment to, for instance, thinking, shall we have a transport plan for every ward in this city? So that everyone at least thinks that they've had some kind of contribution to the overall plan that we've got for Leeds. And unfortunately, the transport scheme, team that we have, don't have the capacity to deliver that. They said themselves, they are overworked with working on schemes in Leeds city centre and delivering the expectations from planning applications, which also tend to be delivered in the city centre. We really need to get a fair deal for those communities on the outskirts of the city. And if we could commit to delivering a transport plan for each ward, it would make a huge difference to achieving some of those areas which were highlighted in the plan, that the consultation said were of importance. And if I remember rightly, because I haven't got my code in my iPad, there we go. They were talking about disability access. And what else were there? There was another two. Oh, I'll get there eventually. Anyway, all of those issues will come out of local transport planning. And in terms of the consultation itself.
It'd be thousands, never mind 1700.
What I did note is that there were actually 19,000 visits to the online platform. Yeah. But there were only 4,636 contributions and they were made by 1,739 respondents. So I think we do have to recognise that even when we've actually got people to the platform that we want to engage with them in terms of having a conversation about transport, we were so prescriptive about the questions that we wanted to ask, that the vast majority of them just switched off immediately and left the site without actually putting any kind of contribution on there. We really do need to think about having real conversations and not just online transactions with the people that we're supposed to be doing this public investment for.
Thank you councillor Hayden, please.
Well, they did, and it says in the report, visit all the community committees in the city. That was obviously online as well because of the pandemic. I don't know about you, but I've clicked on things and been very interested and then not actually taken the time to make, to make your written comments on something. So the fact that 19,000 people were engaged, you know, actually read the report and there's all kinds of data to say how much they read, how much each person read or engaged in and all that sort of thing, is actually really, really positive. And maybe they were all like really happy with it. So as we've been ambitious, we have criticism that we're not ambitious enough from certain sectors that would like to see us go farther, especially in terms of tackling the climate emergency. Yes, we're all elected as councillors and people work for the council because they want to the best and they want to engage with the people of Leeds. We haven't been able to do that as we normally would do. And we go back four years, it was four years councillor Lewis, and you'll remember, to the transport conversation, where we did have those conversations in community committees in a room, talking about, you know, bus services and what was very much in people's local communities. It's called connecting Leeds, it's not just for the city centre. And it's, and in here, we're talking about 15-minute neighbourhoods, but we're talking about connecting communities to each other. So not just to the city centre and connecting people within that community as well. So as it says in paragraph 72, the strategy objectives are to ensure cycling and walking are the first choice for the shortest journeys. So that is the journeys around your house, around your homes, to school, to, if you're working from home, you're not travelling that far, that far anyway, but for leisure, for shopping, all those sorts of journeys, but you want it to be, cycling and walking to be the first choice in those short journeys. And we're seeing the strategy, the cycle path connecting up to Castleford from, from the outer areas of Leeds, all those communities. And we've, we've seen in Leeds, in East Leeds, the trial of the, trail of the flexi bus, which is not a bendy bus, which, you know, my dad thought, how was a bendy bus going to get up Knights Way? But it's not, it's a minibus, all electric and people are really enjoying, you know, it's very difficult to get from, even from if you live in East End Park, or particularly if you live near me in Colton or Holton, to St James's Hospital, for example. And you can book on this bus up to an hour before your journey and it will take you there or to the fabulous park at Temple Newsome. And, you know, we're seeing a really great uptake with that. And I would like to see that all over Leeds with, you know, people being able to connect to their family, friends, to school, to health services, to leisure and to everything that this fabulous city has to offer. I'll leave it there before I go on too much. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hayden. Gary, would you like to come in please, see your indicating?
Thank you, Chair. If I could make a few comments, please. Firstly, thank you particularly to councillor Hayden and others for positive comments that have been made today, particularly about the efforts of the team in challenging circumstances. That's very much appreciated and I will, Paul and I will certainly pass that on to the teams involved. Consultation, some comments made around consultations. I suppose to benefit of having been around a few years now, I've seen these type of consultations before at, at this local level and also at West Yorkshire level. And I think the, the level of response is indicative of those in the past, probably better, certainly given the circumstances. But perhaps most importantly, that the outputs and outcomes are very much in line with those previous consultations as well. So they're very much telling us the same sorts of things, which is reassuring. But it is very much the case that we want to carry on with engagement and consultations with the communities. And connecting Leeds brand that has been produced in recent years is something we do want to continue using the commonplace platform, which has been a huge benefit in terms of getting our, our consultations out and getting feedback. And indeed, that's been recognised by national awards that we've, we've received on the back of that and other authorities contacting us to ask us how we do it. I think it was councillor Golden that made the point about that this is not a document for highways and transportation staff and their friends. And I absolutely agree with that. This is about particularly elements of vision zero and issues like that. We need every party, every partner, every business, every resident of Leeds, every manufacturer, just everybody playing their part because we're not going to achieve what we've set out in this document if it is just left to highways and transportation policy colleagues. That is the step change that we're looking for as part of this document. In terms of the sort of local narrative, absolutely, this is a strategy. There are plenty of hooks in the action plan that's attached to this, where we want to do more in the localities and in local communities, particularly around healthier streets. And certainly the next stage through the action plans is to unpick the strategy and decide what that means and how it's resourced. And that will be an issue that we'll obviously talk to our executive member about and bring back to the exec board as appropriate. But there is an absolute commitment and hooks throughout this document and in the action plan where we want to do that. I could, probably my last comment, I could pick up on other points, but in terms of the, the works that are ongoing at the moment, that we do about, or we facilitate about 900 temporary road closures a year and 25,000 street openings every year. It's a massive amount of work that is coordinated across the city. It's not just our work, it's developers, utilities and the emergency work that has to take place, obviously by its nature at very short notice. And the teams that are involved do an incredible job, night and day, trying to coordinate this as best they can and avoid clashes. It's not easy, but there are teams that are heavily involved in this work. And it's not just teams in my area, but across the directorate as well, trying to coordinate things. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Gary. Councillor Carter, please.
Yes, we preface this by saying I have a very high regard for our highways department and the staff, what remains of them. My complaint really is that there is insufficient resource. And bear in mind, most of these capital schemes, you should have costed officer time to them. Therefore, we should not be seeing this inability to get anything moving at more than a snail's pace in terms of, well, all areas of these, but particularly outer areas. When you refer to step change, I mean, that presupposes of course that up to now, we've totally ignored all the people that you've referred to, the businesses, the individuals and this, that and the other. If it's a step change, then it wasn't happening before. So before, today, we were ignoring everybody. And really, people may well feel that's the case. I don't necessarily subscribe to that, let me say, but the implication is quite clear. Councillor Golden was, I think, I think making a point that we were still ignoring vast swathes of Leeds, not agreeing that this report doesn't. That was my interpretation of, man, you have to get confused with what councillor Golden says, but on this occasion, I was, I was pretty clear what the implication was. And you just, you did a better job than a politician who turned it on its head and made it mean exactly the opposite. Well, you're not getting away with that, sorry. And we come back to the issue of capacity and the inability of the department now to tackle issues. And let's face it, you have just communicated with all members of the council, virtually apologising for the fact that, and you are overworked. And I said, I felt sorry for the pressure that your staff was under and I am. But at the end of the day, we're under huge pressure in our wards now, things that were promised long enough ago and not, just not done. And I look at this and I think, we're going to be in a worse state than ever here because the capacity clearly isn't there. What are we doing about that?
Thank you councillor Carter. Would like to come, come in again, Gary, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, thank you for your comments about high regard to the highway service. I'll certainly pass that on councillor Carter, thank you. The capacity one is an ongoing issue. And yes, I've just written to all the councillors about the level of work we've, we've got at the moment. Some of the programmes of work are coming to an end and that will see a shift of that resource into areas of work. But you're quite right, the level of demand outstrips supply and it is about prioritisation and those will be conversations that I'll have with our executive member and the director about how we progress from here. But we are recruiting and we've been very successful as a service in terms of taking on apprenticeships and trainees and will continue to do that. The step change point, I think it's, what the point I was trying to get across is that sometimes it feels like it's trying to get everybody to own the sort of policies and strategies that we have, rather than relying on a, on a service coming in and doing a particular scheme. And the best example I usually give is around safer routes to school, where if you have a local champion, sometimes like a head teacher, you know, we can put in all the sort of comms and measures you like into persuade people to leave their cars at home. But when you have a local champion that isn't anything to do with highways and transportation, that drives that local enthusiasm and commitment to see a change locally. And that's what I'm trying to get at, that it can't be down to the service and the number of people that we've got to drive that completely. We do need to have those local champions to help support us. And that might be in the form of businesses and maybe schools or the fora. That's the point I'm trying to get. And we've done that successfully in the past. The point I'm trying to get across is that we need to do that on a much bigger scale. And that's why it needs to go out to that level.
Thank you, Gary. I don't see any more comments on this paper, so I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 113. I see everybody's happy with those, they're agreed. And move on to item nine, please councillor Hayden.
Thank you, Leader. This is part, the housing estate redevelopment at Sugar Hill Close and Wordsworth Drive, Alton. So this report provides details on how the council is responding to issues arising from the proposed redevelopment of the privately owned housing estates of Sugar Hill Close and Wordsworth Drive in both of them in Alton. Specifically, it sets out how the council can maximise the delivery of new, high-quality, affordable housing at the site, which could be made available to existing tenants of the estate through the applications of a local lettings policy. The report also sets out why it's not recommended to acquire, retain and refurbish the current housing. It further sets out the actions that can be put in place in the short term to support tenants during a time of significant uncertainty. The history of Sugar Hill and Wordsworth Drive is also set out in the report. And I think, I hope that the report does reflect the awful uncertainty and fear that the tenants have and are still experiencing and have done for several years. I have, I have yet taken over this portfolio, a part of my portfolio in May. I have yet to meet in person the tenants in Sugar Hill and I look forward to doing so, when we, very soon when we meet and set up a tenant forum. So I'd like to thank councillors Cooper and Lewis for all that, meeting the tenants over the, over the years and, and councillor, and during the pandemic as well, when it was very difficult to meet indoors, when we weren't allowed to meet indoors, and they went to meet tenants in gardens, et cetera. So I'm, I'm confident that we have a plan going forward for very good reasons, that is confidential at the, at the moment. But I'm confident it will see an increased number of affordable housing above anything that is stated in, in planning. And that high quality, affordable housing will be in this, in this site. And we will do everything we can to help keep this community together over the, over the long term. I'll leave it there, Chair, and take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hayden. Now, are there any comments?
Yes.
I'll take councillor Carter first, please.
I mean, my, my issue, only issue with this is to do the best for the people who haven't got assured tenancies and who effectively are going to be evicted. I, I think the council in spelling out why it can't intervene with those properties is the only way forward. But I think we may have to look at being much more flexible about the housing opportunities for the people who will be displaced. And I'd like to hear a bit more about, about that. Anyone who's been here for enough of time at all knows about the history of the area houses, knows that there was a lead solution provided by, in the time of councillor Arthur Miller. And that all looked very good and from the outside, it does look very good. But it was essentially only an external cladding of a problem that is still there. And ultimately, will come back to haunt us in other forms. But to stick to this, I just want to hear more about how we intend to help the individuals who for no fault of their own will be evicted. Because they will, there's no, you can't use any other word for it than evicted. Now, people with assured tenancies have got some level of protection. So we're down to a number within the total. And I would like to hear more about how we intend to help them because they have a real problem through none of their own making. And I, we've all received an email from a gentleman sitting certain questions and facts before us. And I, we've all received an email from a gentleman sitting certain questions and facts before us. But I'm not sure the council could do any other than what they've done in this report. And I'm not going to oppose it. But I do want to hear more about the individuals concerned, given the context of what we've discussed earlier, the pressures on housing. And I'll leave it at that for the moment.
Thank you councillor Carter. Gerard, John's coming in at that point. I know sadly, we, as you referred councillor Carter, we all get these section 31 no fault evictions in our casework all the time. And sure Gerard, when he comes in, we'll update exact board on how many receive a year. But sadly, we're experienced in dealing with section 31 evictions in the council. Gerard, do you like to come in, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Is it working now? Thank you. Just in terms of section 21 notices, the number that we get in Leeds, I mean, over the pandemic and because of the restrictions on being able to evict private tenants, we didn't get as many over the previous 12 months. We got just over 700. But the year prior to that, we got just over 1,000 customers come to us being served with a section 21 and facing eviction. So dealing with these customers, council is something that, that we're very used to. In terms of how we're looking to help these, well, we, we're committed to work with the housing association and to frame a local lettings policy, which will give preference to the people that are displaced from that stair. And that, that will give them significant chances to acquire some of the new homes because they will have to compete against other people in the area. Obviously, there's the period between them losing the homes and then getting the new homes. And what can we do there? Well, we, we committed to work with the individuals, assess them, give them the relevant information in terms of the priority ward, potentially direct let status on our waiting list. But councillor Galton's very much aware, there isn't too much availability of social housing stock within the ward. Last year, we turned over about 108 units. And I've already got 128 people within the ward that are already classes band A within our urgent housing need group. And a number of those properties won't potentially be suitable for the people of the Sugar Hill estate as well. They might not be the right size. So we'll be supporting them in terms of linking them up with private landlords that can help. That will be a challenge within the ward, particularly when you look at the local housing allowance of that ward, the rent, sorry, for that ward tends to be more than the local housing allowance. That will create challenges for us. But we do, on, on average, find people homes around about 50 a month, just over in the private fraternity team that we've got. So we're confident we can work with the individuals and find them somewhere else to live if that's needed, while the work for the new homes is built. And then they can bid for those through the local lettings policy and get that preference that I've talked about.
Thank you, Gerard. Councillor Galton, would you like to come in, please?
Yes, please, Chair. This paper will be a real disappointment to the residents that live on that estate. And it's primarily because there is such a missed opportunity. I know that the, there are people on that side of the table that often use the phrase, those with the broadest shoulders should bear the greatest burden. And when it comes to the delivery of affordable housing and the access to the finance to deliver housing on scale, it is Leeds City Council, which is the primary deliverer of that in this city. And the experience which has happened on the Sugar Hill Estate is that the council has made a strategic decision when it has been asked to step in as the organisation with the broadest shoulders in the city to help out a community in distress, that they have decided to look at it less as a, an issue of people and their needs and more of an issue of an asset management question. Because the primary fault in terms of getting the solution that the residents want is because this council has decided that in its housing growth strategy, that it would prefer to have new build housing on purpose built estates. And that if it buys back council housing, that it's the housing type that they prefer. Even though this particular housing type is already within the council's housing portfolio. And that is the key issue at hand here. And this has been going on for around five years. And if the council had actually made that decision and said, it's because it's the wrong kind of house. I'm sorry to you as residents, but it's just the wrong kind of house for us. They could have at least perhaps made a plan to deliver enough houses of the variety that they do like to have been delivered through their housing growth strategy to enable these people to decant into those properties when they knew that the inevitable was going to happen once the development had been given permission to go ahead. It is obvious from this paper that none of that preliminary planning work has taken place. And even any kind of plan to try and ensure that they had preferable access to local available housing, that plan never occurred either. And this solution that has been promised by the council to those residents over the past years, that they would stand side by side with them and get them a solution, which means that they wouldn't be evicted, actually involves them being evicted. It actually involves them being, starting a new life somewhere else for the next two years before it becomes convenient enough for the council to provide them with an affordable home in the format in which the council prefers. And I think that's a real indictment in terms of how this council looks at the theme that it used to mention all the time. I'm not sure if it's still actually there for the council, which is strong economy, compassionate city. Because the compassion element in this paper seems to be a little amiss. And that is why I really can't support this and I'm having to reserve my position.
Thank you councillor Galton. I was hoping, obviously, you will not be supporting 40 brand new affordable houses for residents in your ward. We'll note that, hoping we may have heard what you've achieved in the 20 years as a councillor for Rothwell Ward to help this community, including the six years your party ran the council. We've not heard that, so we will note, will note those comments as we take forward. And certainly I know from having met the residents that this isn't the response that they want and they will be disappointed. And nobody, I think, from our administration will shy away from that. But clearly, we have a deliverable plan with the investment available for brand new affordable houses on that site. And I think that is a compassionate response and one, as we look at our growth of affordable housing across the city, one we would stand by. Are there any more comments on this paper?
Yes. I'm not going to query. Action could have been taken a great deal earlier and the conclusion could have been reached a great deal earlier. Nevertheless, stick to what I said previously. I was pleased for the, well, no, I understand the reassurance I was given, okay. Whether it goes far enough is another matter. My understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the owners of the houses on the site want a cleared site for redevelopment, simple as that. And that's, and the fact these houses are in the condition they're in, they want a clear PDQ. So I think there is some merit in one of the points that Stuart's made about, we have known for quite a long time. And, you know, we could have been thinking about making some sorts of provision that would, that would help them in particular and ultimately the city in term, and, and, and you are the provider of residential accommodation. And I do think there's some merit there for in the, in, in, in that comment. But we are where we are. And, and, and you've come to a recommendation that I think you couldn't have avoided, quite frankly. Whether it could have been dealt with in another way earlier, the answer is probably yes, it could indeed. At the debate we had about this in the council chamber, points were raised about how issues of this sort could, could be dealt with in the future, maybe should have been dealt with in this case. And we go back to the thing about having a housing company and a vehicle for providing housing for rent. Now, I still think you've dragged your feet appallingly in that respect. And something like that would undoubtedly have addressed the problem we've got here or could have done. But simple fact is it can't, we, we have to reach a conclusion. And it's been left too late to reach any other conclusion. And I appreciate why Stuart makes the comments he makes, so I should leave that at that. But I think, given where we are now, then we have to pass this paper. But I would, would urge you to continue to look at anything we can do to mitigate the awful situation these people are faced with. It's not a situation I'd like to be faced with, basically being told, well, you know, you're going to be moved out of the place, maybe where you've been born and off you go. It's not really acceptable. And I wonder if the site owners understand the liability and responsibility they have. Because looking at some of the points that were raised on the email that was sent, it looks to have been an element of the ball being dropped well and truly here. And the owners of the site not behaving particularly well, I have to say.
I think in response to your first part of the question, I mean, there's nobody in this room that can speak for the owners, only the owners of the site.
No, I understand.
Can, can speak for themselves. You know, we've all seen the, the, the planning process. And again, recognise planning is separate from housing in terms of the policies effective here. And obviously, the decision by a government appointed inspector to overturn the council decision earlier this year. I don't think anybody, until eviction notices arrived through people's letterboxes on this estate in July, there was no indication of the timescales that the site owners were operating to. And quite clearly, we've got this response that we have. Councillor Coop, would you like to come in, please?
Yeah, yeah, if I can, because I'm, I'm sure as exec board members know, this has been under my previous portfolio as well. And I've had a lot of involvement in this, in this issue. And I would just like to point out that a lot of work did go on earlier around speaking to the residents of Sugar Hill, right from the very beginning when we first were made aware that, of the planning application that, that the landowners wanted to put in. And our housing officers went out, knocked on all their doors, spoke to the tenants that wanted to speak to housing about alternative housing options and, and availability, should they have wanted to. Some people did take us up on that, you know, and we were able to, to assist some of them then. And that offer has been ongoing throughout the time that we have been dealing with this issue. You know, I, I have to say that, you know, the, the residents have, have really been through a very difficult time through, through, through all of the process that they've had to undergo. So the planning application, the, the appeal and that, and then the, the eviction notices that have, that have dropped as well. You know, but I would stand behind what officers of this council and indeed executive board members and leaders have done, you know, to try and assist in the best way we possibly could, given this was a private, a private land with a private owner with their own agenda of how they wanted to take it this forward. I think that we've got pink papers to discuss later, you know, that are not for public access at the moment that should hopefully give some relief to, to some of those residents. You know, we know that it's not the solution that they wanted because, you know, they want refurbished, they want the properties to be refurbished and stay how they are. And this is not the solution that's going to deliver that. But I'm hoping that, 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 that pink paper, when it does become public, knowledge will give those residents some comfort in the fact that we have been, you know, behind the scenes and trying to get a solution so that they can all have an affordable home within that area.
Apologise, I'd switch microphones there. So I am turning to the recommendations noted, that one of the recommendations is that this comes back to executive board. I'm turning, noted councillor Galton's comments. I don't see any other objections, so we've agreed those recommendations and will.
When it comes back, will it contain more assurances on the people who are faced with this problem?
Yes, we can cover, yes, we'll, we'll cover information like that. As many, like I say, as, you know, many assurances you can give people facing a section 21 eviction notice. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is item 10, which is under my portfolio. And this is the shaping our best city ambition paper. I'll give a very brief introduction to this paper. In the past, we've had a best council plan, which has been under my portfolio for the last five years and an excellent piece of work, if I say so myself. But what I think we recognised during the pandemic is actually we achieve a lot in this city, not just by what we do as a council ourselves, but also the work we've done with partners. That's a, a real, something that we've learned. And so this paper will start the process, instead of having a best council plan this year, we'll, we'll have a best city ambition. And it's not just about changing the word, it is about including partners and the rest of the city in what we hope to achieve. As a paper sets out, we need to, there's a very big process point that we need to agree to change our budget and policy framework in this paper requests that. And clearly, the initial proposals will come forward in, for what the contents, once we've got the process sorted out today, what the contents of our ambition with our partners and everybody in the city is. But like I say, this is just setting the ball rolling today. And I will ask if there's any comments on this paper. I don't see, ah, councillor Galton, please.
Thanks, Chair. As I mentioned prior to the meeting, I have had a sustained discussion on this paper. And for me, I, I can sometimes just get a little jaded when we get yet another high level strategic document, which talks about the principles in which we take decisions. And then you find that some decisions get taken that just ignore much of those principles which are mentioned in strategic documents. But for this particular one, the previous best city plan had breakthrough projects which never seemed to break through. But at least it was something that we could look at and think that's the direction we want to go in. And that's where we hope to have the creativity of the city focused on. And one of the things that I'd like to see about this paper in the future is, at the moment, it is primarily about trying to concert action between strategic anchor partners in the city, you know, the council, the NHS and the universities, the usual partners that, that we've already had. What I'd like to see is how we can be self critical and self evaluate to point out how that partnership hasn't delivered as much as it could and how this approach is actually going to be an improvement on that which went before it. But I think more importantly is I want to see in the future a prescription as to how we actually a prescription as to how we actually involve the vast majority of the people of the city in our ambition going forward. And that they are actually active participants within it. And that that takes place at a community level and not just by involvement in consultation projects. And so I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Galton. I think some of those suggestions are constructive and can be taken on board. I think, gosh, the breakthrough projects date back to Alderman Wakefield's days. The one I had some involvement in on, I can't remember what it was called, but it's the one that led to the development of the district heating scheme. Clearly gave us a really positive outcome where we could sort of match our climate ambitions, infrastructure delivery, housing and the private sector. So that I would give as a, from the breakthrough project days as a good example of the kind of delivery we want. And, you know, like I say, I think you had some very, within there, there were some constructive comments. This is very much started, this very much a process about how we started. And I think some of the things we can pick up as we develop moving forwards. Glad to come in, councillor Carter.
Yes, I would, yes. I just refer to this paper as the bonfire of the vanities, really. A novel I would recommend anyone to read. You clearly seem to be saying, well, this best council plan before hasn't really worked. And it was very much top down and very belatedly, you're now setting out a plan, which if you stick to it, may have a lot more buy-in and a lot more people prepared to actually engage with the council and deliver on people's priorities and not the council, as I said, council vanities. And I'll leave it at that. And we'll see how you progress this and we shall watch it very closely. And not for the first time today, which is quite unusual. I agree with councillor Galton. And so you'll be judged by the level of engagement, not only with the general public in all areas of this city, but by, I think, councils of all parties. Because we all know, over the last few years, we've had a growing number of concerns and complaints about exactly who we were supposed to be serving. And it's certainly not ourselves. And I hope that this is the start of a completely new strategy. And we're close to that and say, it's quite obvious what it is. It's a loading up to failures over the past five, six, seven years. And that doesn't mean to say there weren't some successes, because there were. But it is that. That's exactly what it is. It's a redirectioning of where the council should be going. And at the moment, it looks as though we might all be able to get on board and support a lot of what we're trying to achieve.
Again, a bit like councillor Galton, I think there were some helpful comments in there. And some less helpful, some, you know, less helpful comments as well. I do think we can't, and I wouldn't want to ignore that the way we've worked as an organisation with others in the city and with people in the city, has changed dramatically over the last 18 months or whatnot since the first lockdown was introduced. And I think if we didn't reflect that in the way we moved forward, I think we'd be amiss. And that's what the strategy is about. It's not saying that things are done wrong. It's just that we've had such dramatic set of events that things have changed. We do need to do that. So I will take that as a constructive endorsement, councillor Carter. And I'm going to, before we all fall out, I'm going to turn to the, I'm going to turn to the recommendations on 439. Which I think everybody has, everybody has agreed with. And we'll move on to your papers, councillor Cooper, please.
Yeah, thank you, leader. My first paper is the Gambling Act 2005 Statement of Licensing Policy. Executive board members will recall this from our last executive board, where the report came forward on the findings of the consultation around reviewing this policy. The policy has to be reviewed every three years. And it's now been back to scrutiny board with no further comments for us as an executive board at this point in time. And we are now asked to approve it. The next stage, it will go to full council for adoption at the full council. I'll leave it there, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cooper. Councillor Carter, please.
One particular issue which I want to raise and get some reassurance on. Apparently, the Gambling Commission compliance assessment way back in 2019, revealed that an organisation had failed to effectively implement its anti laundering and safer gambling policies. And that they went on then to fine a particular company, nearly half a million quid. The council only found out from a press release. I think it highlights a potential serious weakness in the council's oversight of licensing objectives. This kind of contravention, I'm told, can't be identified through our local compliance regime. I think the licensing committee needs to investigate, if necessary, in camera as a matter of some urgency and make sure that we are, that our licensing committee and our compliance regime are fully aware of any incidents like this. And if it means us taking it up directly with the Gambling Commission, then we should. Am I correct in what I have just said?
So if I can come back, unfortunately, councillor Carter, we haven't got an officer here to answer that to leave due to an emergency situation. So I am aware of the case that you've raised here today. Only recently become aware and it does date back to 2019. You're quite correct in that. I think that it's notable that we weren't alerted to it by either the company themselves or the Gambling Commission. And I think that, you know, I have already taken steps to ensure that conversations and communication is had with the Gambling Commission and the company to ensure that in future, that there is a protocol that is, that actually we are made aware of any breaches or indiscretions or anything that we need to be made aware about as a licensing authority dealing with these different companies in the city who hold licenses for gambling. So I can give you some reassurance that we are on to it. I'm happy to pick it up with you after executive board if you want and and ensure that you're fully briefed as to where we're at at this present time with it as well. I can't give you that here because we haven't got an officer in attendance, councillor Carter, that's all.
Chair, that's some reassurance. Obviously very worrying. Talk about money laundering because heaven knows whose money is being laundered and what for. Particularly at the present time. And the only assurance I'd like from you now here is that the licensing committee members will be fully briefed about this. So that they are aware of what's happened and that they can hopefully strengthen their position in making sure that they are fully informed. And a private briefing then on all of the matters will be very welcome. Thank you very much.
That's already in train to happen with the licensing chair is already aware and he is going to take it forward to his committee.
Thank you. I don't see any more indications to speak. So I'm going to turn to the recommendations on page 545. And I see everybody's happy with those, although they are agreed. And we'll move to item 12, please, councillor Cooper.
So item 12 is the financial health monitoring for month five of this year. I think just a couple of points to make on this one, that we have got some COVID related overspend within this year. But we are hopefully to be able to achieve a balanced budget at the end of the year. In fact, it's important that we do, otherwise we will take forward other pressures next year that we can far do without, I've got to say. It's been an extremely challenging year, not only because of the impact of COVID on the financial situation of the council. But actually, we're still trying to achieve a £56 million in savings during this year as well. So I'll leave it there for now, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any comments on this paper? Councillor Carter, please.
To turn to the levels of overspend, which fortunately for us, being largely offset by what is currently only one-off money that we've got from the government in terms of the COVID protection money, which is what, £20 million? But I want to go back and hope that to get some sensible comment. I'd like this executive board to have a report on the waste collection situation. Because it doesn't seem to have improved at all since the debate in council. I think I've had five emails so far today about missed collections. And we need to give our constituents some reassurance. Now, I understand why the pressures financially are there. And I understand that there may indeed be a greater presentation of waste, both green and black, but not to the, not that can't be properly addressed, in my view. On brown bins, are we actually saying that there is now an over presentation of garden waste and blaming it on COVID? Because I've never heard anyone suggest that COVID has caused gardens to grow faster, weeds to grow faster, trees to shed more leaves and whatever. And I think most of our residents would think we've gone out of our minds if we were actually suggesting that there was now over presentation of brown bin waste. It makes no sense. And rather than getting to a spat on a world tour with councillor Afik, I would like him to commit to bringing a report on the overspend situation and what rectification measures are being taken as regards the refuse collection service. Because when it comes to next year, and this council puts council tax up again, which it will, now some residents are going to say, hang on a second, you don't even empty out dustbins anymore. And people are waiting a three weeks and a month sometimes for collections. I think this exec board can expect to have a proper paper and explanation. But more particularly, councillor Afik, a plan of how we're going to go forward and get this job sorted out. Otherwise, we're going to have an overspend next year. And hopefully, there'll be no COVID to hide behind. Says he, as I say, hopefully. But, but I think, you know, the exec board deserves a proper explanation. And I've tried to keep this conversation relatively polite because I don't necessarily think, largey bargy like the one in council serves any purpose at all. Our residents want to hear what you're actually going to do about it. Get on with it and do it.
Thank you, councillor Carter. And I heard on the media this morning, we might be into winter Plan B already. Let's, councillor Afik, would you like to come in, please?
Yeah, thanks. I mean, councillor Carter. Yeah, okay, well, can I have one minute?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not really sure where you're taking the discussion. On one hand, you're saying, you're talking about the overspent. Clearly, there's been, you know, extra tonnages across the three different, you know, the bin streams, black, green and brown during, since the start of the pandemic. Obviously, more people are working from home, more packaging because more people are ordering online. And of course, people, you know, we've had a relatively good weather as well, coupled with de-leafing. But on top of that, obviously, in terms of priority, the green and black bins are prioritised. If we are, you know, obviously short on a couple, on a particular day, then it's the brown bins tend to be, you know, and hence if you, you know. And I'm proud to say in City and in E-Forum that we do have one of the best brown bin and the biggest anywhere in the country and free of charge as well. And I mentioned that in full council, and I can say this about neighbouring Bradford or Birmingham or many others, where they're sort of, you know, for instance, Birmingham only collect 50,000 bins, brown bin collection every week. We do 210,000 out of 357,000 properties. Birmingham's got over 400,000 properties and they do 50,000. So, you know, there are obviously clearly challenges, 10 to 15% in terms of extra presentation, which is not just the cost of extra crew and staffing, but the cost of disposing of that waste as well, which why we've got the oversight. I'm more than happy, if you've got any emails to forward to me, if there is particularly, a particular issue in your ward, to do that. We did have issues coupled with, you know, the Freedom Day and, you know, the lifting of restrictions, particularly in July and August. The problem has been much better. Although I think a couple of days yesterday and today, and now we've had issues where staff not being able to do overtime or we have some staff being off. So, you know, you do get those. But generally, since the start of September, it's been relatively good. We're not the only ones who you've seen, I think there's about three or four councils around the country where actually staff are going on strikes or considering that. And, you know, I agree that it's not the perfect, but in the midst of all things and how other, how we compare with other local authorities, it is one of the best in the country. And I can assure you of that. I can give you the satisfaction as well.
Sorry, could you put your microphone on, please?
Last, which is, will councillor Afik bring a paper with setting out the recovery plan for the refuse service to the exec board pronto? That's the simple question.
Yeah, so we could look at the overspend and all that. I think that needs to be factored in. We need to see obviously how it pans out going to next year because we don't know how many people would be still be working from home. But that's something I think we need to factor in, we need to be factored into budget rather than showing us an overspend, you know, year in, year out. So, yeah, we're happy to do that. Yeah.
Councillor Cooper, would you like to come in, please?
If I could just bring this back to the finances, which is what the, what the paper is and around the overspend that you raised, councillor Carter, in waste. And we have already got some plans to cover that overspend with some of the funding that we've had around COVID related funding from the government as well. So we do have plans to ensure that we do balance at the end of the year. And some of those funding will be used for the waste overspend as well. I mean, councillor Afik has explained how difficult a year it's been with the, you know, presentation of waste. And it's had an impact on the ability to collect it in a timely way. Not only that, but we've got staff who have been affected, needed to self-isolate and also have been suffering from COVID themselves as well. So I think in difficult circumstances, things are running along quite well.
Let's make it crystal clear. I am not criticising the people who collect our waste because they're doing a fairly unpleasant job and in difficult circumstances that we all know have been very difficult for everybody through COVID. What I'm saying is, there seems to be a lack in management of a proper plan to recover the situation financially and practically. And most of my constituents who complained to me of late have been more than reasonable in terms of understanding people being ill and not being able to do around. It's the lack of any sort of proper plan, there seems to be, to recover the situation and both financially and practically. And I think as an exec board, we've a right to see something, to be frank with you. Because we can then tell our constituents, well, this is the position, this is what's happening, this is what they're doing to put it right. And I think it is a management issue. It's not a labour force issue. It's a management issue.
I think, I'm trying to address this in a tone that you started as councillor Carter. Clearly, when we set the budget back in February, when we were all sat at home, I don't think we even, back in February, thought even by this time of year, we'd still be dealing with COVID. But we, and the effects of that, and we are. So I think it's, again, we obviously bring the financial update every month, which includes financial information. And certainly heard you were. And certainly heard your request for information on the service and we'll bring that forward. Excellent. I don't see any more comments on this paper, so, um, I will turn to the recommendations on page six hundred and seventeen. Um, I see everybody's agreed with those. So we will close the public part of the meeting and move into the uh, confidential, uh, section. Thank you. And I'll say thank you to everybody, uh, for attending.